This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this early meeting of the Vader City Council. It is Wednesday, June fifteenth, fifth, twenty twenty-four, and it is six oh two P M. Roll call.
Here, Joe Che.
Here.
Do you look off?
Here.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Randy Paul.
Here.
Mike Carson.
Here.
Michael Ferguson.
Here.
We are all here and easy to hear.
We're all here and here.
No time, no time delays.
No time to live. Yes, go. It's good. Pledge of allegiance.
I don't have to, I don't have to lip sync the first pledge of allegiance.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mayor's report. The council court subdivision, the planning committee has recommended it. The city council will review that recommendation at our next meeting on June eighteenth. As a reminder, and it's at the end, I'll say it then, too. Our next council meeting is on Tuesday, not a Wednesday. Waste water outfall project, the pre-design report was approved by ecology. So Silvestre is working on the final design now. The schedule is still to do start construction next May. So we get all the way through this. Six-year transportation improvement plan for twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty. The public hearing is scheduled at our next council meeting on Tuesday, June eighteenth. Lewis County Waterline Replacement Project, HCon Incorporated from Hualip was the contractor selected. So if you start seeing their vehicles around town, that's what they're up to. Lewis County P U D fiber optic internet project, the construction is still underway in and around Vader. Mr. Painter is here tonight to talk about that a little later. Circus was on May thirtieth. Both the shows were extremely well attended. I talked with the business owners there with the circus afterwards, and they were very happy with the performance here in Vader, performance being the attendance. And they're looking forward to coming back again. In fact, they said our attendance was better than when they were in Castle Rock. So it's pretty neat to hear that. Great for our promoters, the Lions Club, and then also great that the citizens here in town and around came to support them. Fourth of July city fireworks event is going to start at ten o'clock. Mr. Clay Camp is estimating it to be a thirty-minute show this year. He asked me if we thought that would be too long, like people would lose interest. And I said, let's find out. So.
Not if you do it real like you do before.
That's what, yeah, he's got a great reputation. So. Speaking of fireworks, the cleanup will be obviously the next morning on July fifth, which is a Friday. Our public employees are, that's our day off. And so we need to figure out how to arrange some volunteers to coordinate a cleanup that morning because there is a lot of paper mess out there. So.
I can, I had spoken to Crystal last night about when I, after I drop off the Lions trailer and all their stuff, I can grab my dump trailer and park it in the field under the trees there so that.
That would be great. I will, I will be unavailable that morning. So.
And I'll be, I should be able to bring my.
Be supposed to coordinate that.
That yard vacuum thing over there again.
Very great. That'd be awesome. Oh, yeah, yeah, the attachment for your lawn mower. Great. So the more people out there, the better. There's lots of little bits and pieces. And a reminder again, the next council meeting is on Tuesday, June eighteenth. Council reports. Any members of the council have anything to report? Moving on to agenda approval. I don't have any changes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda for city council meeting on June fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion, Mr. Parsons, to approve the meeting agenda as written. Do we have a second?
Sounds like in that.
Second with Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
Motion that we approve the meeting minutes from May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
A motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve the meeting minutes from May twenty-second or the second.
Second.
Second on Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Well, we approve the vouchers for the first of June, twenty twenty-four, for twenty-seven.
We have a second. Second by Mr. Paul. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. Silvestre County Sheriff's Department, not the report.
The podium.
So this is a report for May, two thousand twenty-four. Total citizen contacts are four hundred and twenty-five. On-shift calls were two, twenty-one traffic stops, and two infractions were issued. Total on-shift calls were two, off-shift calls were twelve, total calls for the month of fourteen, with one custodial arrest. And asked for a warrant arrest from the park. Any questions?
Warrant arrest over at the park.
Yeah, it was a, I believe it was a suspicious.
Guess what is, what is a shoot comp?
Uh, which one?
Shoot comp. It would be twenty-four C fifty-five ninety-six.
Possibly like a shooting complaint or somebody.
Complaint. Got you.
So somebody called in about somebody shooting or that, or that they thought they heard it sounded like somebody shooting or maybe a firework going off or something of that nature.
Gotcha. Being on a Sunday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Silvestre County P U D broadband, Willie Painter.
All right, Mayor Shire, members of the council, thank you very much for allowing us some time to provide an update on the Vader broadband project. I am Willie Painter, broadband and external funding manager with Lewis County P U D. And joining me is Mr. Gary Durier, broadband services supervisor for the P U D. And as you are aware, we have a contractor that started our broadband construction work in May here in the Vader community. It's Confederated Construction located out of Oakville. And so one could just give you a quick, brief update on where we're at with the project, what the timeline looks like. Before I jump into that, though, just a super fast overview of the project. So we applied for grant money for the Vader community project back in two thousand twenty-two. It was like a long time ago. And it took a while for the Public Works Board, the Washington State Public Works Board, to review all the applications from around the state and make award announcements. Once they did that, then the P U D had to engage in the contract review and negotiation with the state, which we did in early twenty twenty-three. And then once the contract was executed, that allowed us then to get into the engineering, energy design, all the environmental, cultural, historical review that these types of construction projects entail. And then once that was done, and we had the right-of-way permits and everything, then we were able to go out to bid for a construction contractor, which is where we're at today. So Confederated will be engaged in a roughly two-hundred-and-forty-day construction period. And then once they get complete, then we'll be ready to start getting folks signed up for both service drops. So those are the fiber drops from the edge of the right-of-way to the customer premise, whether that's a home or a business. And then following that, once we have the electronics in place, then we'll be able to turn those customers up for service, once they've made their choice of which internet service provider on the network that they would like to go with. So just some general overview information about the project. It is going to serve up to roughly eleven hundred households and businesses in the area. We are overbuilding the infrastructure, and what that means is we're creating, where we're putting out robust enough fiber optic cable and the OFDCs, which provide the poor capacity to connect up service locations. We're making all of that a little larger than, than what it would need to be if we were to just serve everybody who's here today, because we want to be sure that we're building it, you know, with the ability to actually grow and expand as the community changes over time. So, so we are looking into the future in terms of the quality build in that regard. And so maybe getting into the timeline here, as it shows here, I'll try not to read it verbatim, but May, we started Confederated Construction, started building the fiber backbone along the roads and highways. I think they've actually been right here downtown lately doing some undergrounding work. And then late Q four, late of this year, so we're talking probably November, December, even though Confederated will still be engaged in building out the backbone, we want to start allowing customers who are in the grant-funded area to begin requesting a fiber drop to their home. And so we will send a letter to those eligible households to let them know that they're in the grant-funded area, and here's the process for how to begin requesting a service drop and what the steps are, and any other related information that they'll need to know. And then they'll be able to start that again in November, December. Once they submit their application, it'll take about a week to review it and for us to design the drop from the right-of-way to their home, maybe two weeks, depending on if it's a, if it's more of a complex drop depending on the location of the home, how far off the road it is, et cetera. Patients who will be the installer, they will come out and they will actually install that fiber drop on the customer's property.
Are they line boring those also?
It's going to be a combination of aerial and underground, depending in large part what the current distribution electrical is to the house, the electrical service to the house. So if it's a home that has power running overhead, we'll likely just string the fiber on that same path.
Gotcha, yeah. Utilizing the same utility.
Yeah, but there may be circumstances where we need to deviate from that. And both our fiber designer, as well as the contractor paramount, they will work closely with the homeowner on a case-by-case basis to make sure there's good communication and that there's discussion so that the homeowner knows exactly how it's going to be installed, the path, and all the related information that they'll need to know. So getting back on timelines, so we will allow, we do want to allow property owners to begin having their service drops built, even though the backbone construction, all of the thick cable is still going to be under construction for a while, because, you know, it's an opportunity for us to minimize and reduce the amount of delay, as opposed to us, you know, waiting for each discrete phase to be complete before we move to the, to the next piece. And so the Confederated Construction is planned to be done sometime around January of twenty twenty-five. And then later in that quarter, the first quarter of twenty twenty-five, that's when we will be able to. Have already got a service drop to their home, and, and they have selected the internet service provider of their choice on our network, where we have a marketplace that they'll be able to choose. And then again, February, March-ish will be about the time that folks will be able to get their broadband provided by the P U D. The broadband speeds that we're offering, you'll probably be familiar with other internet service companies where they provide a range of different speed packages and different price points and other services you can provide. These providers that will be on the marketplace, they may have some other services to provide, but we aren't going to provide flexibility on speed. We're going to, we want everybody regarding their background and circumstance to have blazing fast internet. And so fiber optics is an incredible technology and can support blazing fast internet. And so every person who signs up on this P U D network will get a thousand megabits per second download, over a thousand megabits per second upload. So basically, it's what we call one gig symmetrical, very, very fast internet. And so that's, that's kind of the plan, just because we don't, we don't want to start a network from a place of, of, of people in communities, kind of the haves versus the have-nots. We think internet is an important, modern-day utility, and we want to be sure that everybody has good, solid, high-speed internet. And so that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish. So a couple other final points and open up to any questions that folks might have. So again, just a reminder that the grant is very specific to locations within the grant area. And so when it's time for property owners who begin requesting a service drop to their home or business, if they want to proceed that way, they're going to get a letter that has their name and their address on it, very customized, that will have the information that they need to know. And that letter, again, will go out later this calendar year, November, December-ish. And then furthermore, in the meantime, between now and then, folks can go on our P U D website, and we have an address search tool, so that they'll be able to type in their address, and they'll be able to see if they are, in fact, in the grant-funded area or not. Now, if they are, great, because the grant's going to pay for a lot of the infrastructure associated with their drop. If they're not, do not despair. Again, we're building the plant so that it can expand in the future, and we are actively looking for additional grant funds that can cover the expansion and those homes and properties that are adjacent to the current built area. And, and then there will also be, just like our electric system has, there will be the ability for those who don't want to wait for future grant money, if they aren't in this first round of grant-funded area, they'll be able to pay out a pocket for a drop, as long as we have capacity to get them hooked up. So there will be a range of options for folks who may not be in this first round of your grant. But this grant does cover a vast majority of the Vader community. And so I think most folks who go online, if they type in their address, they'll be in the grant area. So as usual, I'm not going to leave them up, so I'm going to stop talking and open it up for some questions. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so it will. Is paid for from you guys to my house?
Correct. So with, with, with the Washington State grant money that we received.
Right. And the list, the, the address list that your, to you has, will they have a main address, maiden, or will they have only physical address on it?
The, the search function is by a physical address.
Right. But when the letter goes out, like, is it, we use a P O G, P U D mail file to make sure it comes from the P O box, which is.
Yes.
I don't see.
Great question. And, and yes. It is, that's why, and so we will be mailing out to the mailing address on the file. But if people want to see if their address is in the grant-funded area, they're going to need to use their, their physical address when they search.
Sure.
Yeah, great question.
Oh, good to ask. Yeah. What would the out-of-pocket price be for someone not in the grant-funded area?
It varies depending on whether it's going to be an aerial drop or an underground drop, and the distance from the edge of the right-of-way to the, to the outside of their home or business. You know, I can provide this. In terms of the grant funds and how we've averaged it out, the average drop to a home comes out to about twenty-seven hundred dollars. So that is what the grant's paying for, for every property owner who is in the grant-funded area on an average basis. Could be cheaper for folks who have a home that's very close to the street or the road, could be considerably more expensive if they're, you know, three hundred feet from the rent. So it's actually, that is a huge, huge benefit. I, you know, personally. That's why I put the fact that, you know, we're using these, these grant funds to literally save members of the community thousands of dollars who are getting this infrastructure.
For folks in the city limits, it's going to be a lot lower than that.
Yes.
Because the region that you guys are building, right, is, it includes all of the rural areas in there, too. And so a lot of those houses are a long way from the right-of-way.
Yeah.
So that's going to really skew that, that drop price.
Yeah. And again, twenty-seven hundred is average, and the range is, you know, south and north of that.
So do you have any ideas about monthly fees for customers for the, yet?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's always the, the big, the big question.
It's not on here.
So it's not on there because we, we're still in the process of having internet service providers sign up to be on our network, such that people who are going to be on this network, they'll be able to choose which provider they want to provide their internet. And so, you know, based upon our, well, let me back up a half step. We have three confirmed internet service providers thus far. We have Advanced Stream, which is a company that originally started on an open access network, like what we're doing in Tacoma-Gig Harbor area, and they're now on open access networks regionally. So they know what it means to operate on these types of networks. We have Althea Networks. They're a, originally a wireless company that's based out of Northwest Oregon, it's Southwest Washington. And they're getting into the fiber and the open access business. And I think they're changing their name to Hawk Network. So you might see when folks get on the marketplace, it'll say Hawk instead of Althea. And then Paramount, who is our service drop installer, they actually have a different business entity that's also wanting to be one of those providers on the marketplace. So folks can choose that, or should they be too as well. Now down to products. What we're hearing is that most of the providers. Thirty dollars-ish a month over and above the wholesale rate. And the wholesale rate is the rate that the provider has to pay for the P U D to maintain and operate this very expensive plant. And so it's yet to be seen exactly where their pricing is going to be, but I'm anticipating it's going to be someone eighty, eighty-five, ninety dollars per month for gig service. So, you know, still, still expensive for some helpful budgets, absolutely. But if you compare other certain internet service providers for their gig service offerings. So, you know, we, we think it's, it's, it's good, it's a good price when, when one takes into account, you know, the competition in the broader community and region of Lewis County and beyond.
How does that compare to like five G? Is that comparable?
It doesn't compare. A thousand over a thousand is, you know, how, so it, it, yeah, fiber, fiber can transmit the entire contents of the Library of Congress in three seconds, from east coast to west coast and back to the east coast. So I mean, a thousand, a thousand over a thousand is a multiplication factor faster than five G.
Okay. Just give us some perspective there.
I should probably figure out a better, clearer way to describe the, the, the speed comparison, but it's very fast.
I did, I did fiber to the home in Utah. It was Utah, yeah, Utah. And we downloaded, and this was twenty years ago, we downloaded all of the Star Trek movies in two minutes. So, I mean, I just wanted to make a comment about the contractors. They were have a big shop area. So I told them that they could park there, and they could park there overnight if they wanted to. And they were very appreciative. They cleaned everything up. He said, what kind of beer do you like? I'll get you a case of beer for that thing. I said root. And sure enough, not a case of root beer the next day. It was great.
Yeah, I have also heard good things about the contractors that you've selected.
Is that, are that the Trinity trucks that are running around town? Integrity. Oh, integrity.
Do they run around town, or does that have fiber in it?
Uh, it shouldn't have the fiber quite yet.
Yeah, I didn't think it did.
There's no fiber yet.
Right.
They're just putting it into a conduit.
Gotcha.
Between the walls. Those are going to pull in fiber in the next few months. And the conduit has built-in messenger wire in it for locates. And so it should help to mitigate and minimize future issues where folks are taking and they accidentally break into the fiber, because as long as they do the right one-one and, and the locate, it shouldn't, shouldn't get into that. And I appreciate it. The fiber glass posts that you folks see out there with the red top, most of those are test stations, so you can get a special screwdriver bench, pop that off, and there's a little plastic piece in there, and that wire that'll go down to those conduits.
And they can follow the tracer.
Yeah, you can hook a tracer on and set a small, you know, little handle down there and trace that out. And I appreciate the, the good feedback of the contractor. You know, with any project like this, there are also bound to be not positive experiences from time to time. And, you know, we've gotten one or two phone calls that, you know, I think, minor, I think, generally speaking, and we were able to very quickly resolve those. And I would just invite the council or anyone here that, you know, if you are aware of any issues or any feedback at all, as we go through this over the next several weeks and months, you have my phone number at the bottom of the sheet. Don't hesitate to call me. I'm not always a person with, with all the answers, but I know who to, who to get the answers from.
So those, are those test poles going to be there forever now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're not all test stations, but come on test station, you're going to see others identical, but they won't have that device inside. I had on SRS five oh six, the state's going to require us to, maybe five hundred feet. So they won't be a test station, but we put them next to the walls, so those interconnect with that wire that's embedded in the conduit. So they'll also be here for, excuse me, by, as long as they don't get mowed over, and if they do, we may come out and replace them. So.
They don't have lower ones that.
I'm sorry.
They don't have lower underground ones?
That's just the standard that they come.
It ended up in where I was going to put my circular driveway.
Oh, it did.
I went out there, I'm like, what are we, he's, oh, it's going to be a drive-over bolt. Like, okay, cool.
Yeah, they are.
And then I came over, I came back, and there was a pole sitting there. I'm like, I can't run over that. Okay. It's all over.
Doesn't have to be in one corner, because you put it in one other corner of that bolt. So if it's, if it's.
That's okay. I just, if it's going to be there, it'll be there. I'll adjust around it. No biggie.
Yeah, all bolts are trapezoid, so you can drive.
Have you seen his vehicles?
Yeah. Are you sure?
Any other questions? All right, you have my contact information. Please don't hesitate to reach out at any time. And at your pleasure, I'm happy to come back intermittently and provide additional updates to continue along with the bill.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay, thank you.
Public comment. Any members of the public have anything to comment tonight before we move on?
Hi, I'm Nicole. I just want to say thank you. I don't know how many people are involved with this effort to get a grant for this community to do this, but this is insane speed. This is an insane opportunity. So I was really nice. I want to hopefully say thank you at all, Nicole.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Any other public comment?
Lunch. Chamber meetings on the twentieth of June. Steve Bell landing in Toledo. Get speaker Senator Wilson. He'll be speaking on creating the port district and legislative issues. So we're asking you to be there by eleven thirty, so you could preorder lunch. So it'll be catered from Dallas across the street. So he did start speaking.
I need to talk to Jeff, so. There you go.
At Steamboat?
Yes. Seven dollars per person for lunch.
That's a bargain.
I say fill the place.
So I can bring my crew. We're in there.
Any other members of the public have any comments tonight? Okay, moving on to city business. Item number one, council to confirm new hire for public works summer help. Item number one, council to confirm new hire for Public Works Summer Help, Nolan Wofford. We got, thinking Spanish. We got several applications for the summer help. Nolan was by far the most qualified. He's on his summer break from college, very energetic. He's worked one or two days already. And so I think he's only going to work, you said, Lisa, through the end of August, probably.
Through the end of August?
Yeah, so just for a short time. But he'll help with all the maintenance and everything with John, so.
Good deal. I'll make a motion that we confirm the new hire for Public Works Summer Help. It's Nolan Wofford, is that how you put down his name?
Motion for Mr. Parsons, sir, a second.
Second.
Mr. Ferguson. Any other discussion? You know, it's a pretty good opportunity for a young guy. You know, it's exactly what he was looking for and what we're looking for. All right, now the discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Council discussed interlocal agreements Lewis County for co-management within the unincorporated urban growth areas. So this is kind of just an initial, take a look at it kind of thing. It's new. It's something that the county is proposing with all of the cities. They are currently taking input from cities and adjusting the ILA accordingly. Obviously, there's a lot to it, a lot of it that's beyond what we're able to really say whether it's the right thing or not. But I've got the city planner looking at it. She does have a few questions that we're going to pose to the county. But I just wanted to let the city council take a look at it. And if you did have any comments on it. It's in there. It's like 17 pages. I haven't looked at it now. We don't have time. But anyway.
Insurance paperwork.
No, it's not insurance paperwork. It's ILA. Yeah, so it's pretty extensive. So the county is, county's trying to become more, I don't know what the right word is, modern in the way they manage the UGA's. And this is just a tool that the county and the cities will be able to refer to going forward. Most of it's all good stuff, according to the planner. Good to have it in writing. But as we move through this, we'll see more final drafts and the council stays aware of it. I think in the end, it'll be in our interest, in our interests to join the ILA. We don't have to.
It's good to have an alliance with a larger entity.
Yeah, so, you know. One of the things, so we've had some meetings with the county planners. And, you know, we're going through the comprehensive plan update right now. And counties have the same thing. And so, and obviously, we're within the county and so we're working closely with the county on that. One of the things the county has talked to us about was urban growth areas. The intent of a UGA is not for a city to put a UGA together in 2005 like we did and then never do anything with it. Right? The whole point of the UGA is that that is an area the city needs to expand into to meet our population numbers. Now, the planning committee's been looking at some of that stuff. And so you plan for, you set up a UGA so that you can expand into it, not just sit on it forever. And so one of the things county talked to us about is, look, are you going to use this or not? If you're not going to use it, then you can not have the UGA. Basically, we can reduce the size of our UGA. And we've communicated to the county that that's probably not the direction that Vaters is going to get going. You know, we can see a lot of development on the horizon. Yes, we haven't used it yet, but we probably are. And so there are some discussions about when the city might be interested in doing that. It's all good stuff and there's more to come. Well, obviously, on that particular map there, our UGA is that whole bottom right-hand corner where Enchanted Valley is at. It goes down a little further south than that. No, that's about where it stops. And then, of course, on the west side, it goes all the way out to Winlock-Vader Road. And then north on Winlock-Vader to Ananen, which is where our top city limits are, right there. So it's bottom right and then a whole bunch of stuff on the west and into the north. And there's a little bit next to the water treatment plant there on the northeast where the 506 symbols at. Anyway. Any other discussions? Go ahead and take a look at this in your free time when you're really, really bored. And let me know if you have any input and then I'll forward that to the planner.
I'm sure if there's some plans of going like west, then we'd have to increase our services for water and sewers.
Water already goes all the way down. It's our general service by the Vader Water System. It goes across the bridge. Yeah, the Vader Water System goes all the way to the Winlock-Vader Road. Enchanted Valley is on the Vader Water System. Everything on the west side of, excuse me, the east side of West Side Highway, just off that map, all the, what's that called over there? I can't remember, there's a name for all that area over there. That's all in the Vader Water System, all those houses that look like they're in the country. It's all Vader water. Huge.
And you said last time that they tested the water that goes down Ananen? So we can drink it at the park or is it just usable water?
Yeah, no, it would be, it's potable water, yeah. So it's not, the park doesn't have a connection, but they have a blow-off valve right after the connection point down there. And so they're going to keep the water fresh, they're going to
So after everything that we went through with the house down there, is there a saying that the water's okay?
I can just tell you that they went down, they purged the line, they ran chlorinated water through it, and they did pressure tests and everything. And there's no issues with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Dan said he fought for that one and did all that stuff and said, "Here's the test. They're clean, can we use it?" And we said, "Yeah."
Yeah, after years of
Because I thought it was like a four-inch line, then it went to a two-inch line, then it went back to a four-inch line. And I thought that's where it created bacteria and that's why it wasn't able to be used past that. Anyway, that's just what I remember.
They've got the documents if you'd like to see them.
All right. I like how things fix themselves sometimes. Some electrical stuff does that too. Anyway, we can move on.
The county seems to have been, to be very accommodating in the last six months or so with the variety of things we've got going on. And it could be related to, you know, our Vader's aspirations to get the water system back. My feeling.
Okay. As long as it's safe.
All right, moving on to item number three. Council discussed fireworks display insurance for the Fourth of July celebration. So I need to apologize a little bit about this whole insurance situation. So in previous years, our fireworks display operator was provided through Jake's Fireworks. And because he was employee of Jake's Fireworks, he was covered under that, their insurance policy. The gentleman, Mr. Clay Camp, that's going to be doing our display this year came as a recommendation from the folks at Jake's. But we didn't find out until recently that he's not necessarily an employee of Jake's. And so he's not covered under their insurance. And so after discussions with Mr. Clay Camp, generally, the venues are, if they want additional insurance, they're responsible for acquiring that policy. And so that's my fault for not understanding the way that fireworks, fireworks displays work.
It's a learning, it's a learning process.
So in that, so in the last couple of weeks, we've been searching for insurance policies. In 2016 or 17, when the city paid for insurance policy, when Mr. Smith was doing the, Reggie Smith was doing that fireworks, it was around $2,000 for the policy. And so we've gotten one back so far. We're still waiting on others. And this one's for about $3,000 for this insurance policy. So we're working to find some others that have, that might be lower in amounts. The amount is not necessarily what bothers me so much. And as Mr. Ferguson was pointing out, it's the coverages that are pretty weak for that amount of money. And so we're going to try to do better.
And the operator doesn't have his own insurance?
So he is, he, whatever he's got, wouldn't cover, covers like for him, I guess. It wouldn't cover for, like if we burned the preschool building down or something like that.
The event.
Anyway, so it's basically no, he doesn't have
Is that coming out of our, you know, our initial, what, we put $5,000 into?
No, we've already purchased the fireworks. We've already spent the fireworks money. He already has them and he's already assembling the show. And so this would be in addition to that. And so it's a good segue into what I'm asking council to do. Our next council meeting is until the 18th. It would be good to have
Which is on a Tuesday.
It's on a Tuesday. Very good. Someone's listening. And so what I'm asking for the council to do tonight is, you know, approve an expenditure up to this amount. We'll consider this, you know, the worst-case amount. And then hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll find something better. And that would be the same or less. So as far as where the money is going to come from, right, the special event, special event fund is exhausted. And so we'll need to pull money from other places. I was looking through the budget. It shouldn't be a problem. We're halfway through the year now. We can kind of see where we are in a variety of things. I think we can find $3,000 without a problem. It'll have to be part of the budget amendment that's eventually coming anyway because of, you know, the increased 911 costs and things like that we've seen this year. So the money isn't the problem really. Yes, Mr. Goff.
Yeah, can't we hire somebody from Jake that's covered instead of this guy after we land out his cost in $3,000?
Well, the, yeah, the folks, we did start with the folks over at Jake's Fireworks and they have other commitments this year. That was a, we were getting a real sweetheart deal the previous couple of years. So I think going forward, this is going to be something we're just going to have to figure out, adjust the budget accordingly with insurance in mind and things like that.
Is there a way that the city is trying to make back or can try to make back some of that?
It's been my wish that the event turned into something bigger where there was a way for the city to
Like parking?
To make money or something, but
I don't know.
Again, that takes, who wants to do it?
It takes people.
It takes more volunteers.
It's volunteering to run the fireworks show. You know, so it's been everything that we can do just to get the display going, you know, having having more. And then how do you, how do you do that? You know, if you charge, you know, $4 a person or something for the show, are people even going to walk in or are they just going to stand outside on the road and watch it?
Right, yeah.
I mean, I, some people would gladly pay that to help reimburse the cost, but anyway.
Pass the food.
There's a lot of brainstorming that could go into that to figure out how to do that. It hasn't been done.
So does the fireworks technician guys, you have a license?
You'd be shocked just if you had Boy Scouts walking around with
Licensed fire technician.
Donation boots or something for next year's.
Yeah, we have gotten some donations. I know there was at least one, someone donated online. And I'm not sure how much, do you know how much that was?
Because I remember
I thought someone called when
Reggie, Reggie used to come around and give donations and I think he did pretty good.
Yeah, yeah.
They haven't, yeah. Some previous years, we got Excuse me, Bob?
Here's a question.
I'm good.
He's good.
So, yeah, I mean, there could be a whole party planning committee that could go into that.
Just curious.
We just need some folks that like to step up and make it more than this. So further, there are a couple vendors interested. Parks Board's going to be there again. Lions Club's going to be there again. I've heard that, a taco, a taco truck might be
Kona Ice.
Might be there. Kona Ice?
What? We're making money for everybody else.
Yeah.
Pretty sure that's what
They charged.
The group message.
Okay. So, yeah, so make sure that they get a hold of City Hall so they can, they have the
Do we do, do we do vendor fees for those?
There's a little bit of a vendor fee, the city has a little bit. All right, so it's going to be more, it could be a little bit more of an event for folks. But, you know, put that out there if anyone wants to volunteer being a fireworks, Fourth of July event coordinator. We've got a spot for you.
Joe?
Back to the, yes, Mr. Goff.
Can we, about fireworks?
What about the fireworks? I'm sorry.
Can we reach out to Toledo and Winlock for help on the insurance? It would be, they're benefited by their operations.
Maybe. It's an idea.
And we could ask them if they would like to make a contribution and invite them to make a contribution.
Right away.
I didn't, I don't know. It's like, you know, this is what we've been doing.
Here it goes.
City.
Oh, absolutely, I know. But that would probably
Yeah, they probably
You want to make a phone call?
Give me a number. I will call. I'm pretty good at people.
Maybe, you never know. But That's right. Back to what we do know, though.
Yeah, so I think that we need to go back to item number three. And probably, you know, we need to have an appropriate amount of money set aside for that. So we can budget that, because it is more than what we set aside originally.
Yes, it is more than our special event.
But I had asked out of curiosity, does this guy have a fire technician's license?
He doesn't have a license yet. He has to have a certain number of shows before his, before he gets his license. And so he does not have a license.
We already hired him and paid him?
No.
You have to prove that you can, you don't set anything on fire for 10 shows or kill anybody and then you'll get your license.
It's five shows.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's
That's a great way.
He's done more than five shows. He's been doing other, other big events.
He doesn't have a license.
I get it.
Insurance, it's good.
So is $3,000 like a mark that I think that we'd all agree on that we're shooting for for an insurance cap?
3060 or something like that.
Yeah, I think I mean, these coverages aren't going to, these coverages, they're not.
Stephanie Cook also mentioned in the quotes from the previous challenge that that only covers, like, the lead of the city of Vader and not cover Castle Rock. And so that would be an issue here.
Yeah, we still need to get Castle Rock added on there as an insurance.
Got you.
So is council comfortable with approving up to a certain amount for insurance? Or do we really just, we want to wait until the 18th? So is council comfortable with approving up to a certain amount for insurance, or do we really just, we wanna wait until the 18th?
I'd like to wait till the 18th and get some other stuff because... Oh, I wouldn't have been any, any, no.
Well, that was my one worry on that. I looked at that, and I'm like, if we burn a house down, we can't rebuild it.
And I, meanwhile, I'm building. I have to go to 2 million, so, yeah, I don't know.
Okay. We'll do better.
What do you say about, when they change something, they don't leave a license, would they ensure it?
Yeah, yeah. No, this policy, this policy, they knew, they knew all the details. They knew that he was, that he was experienced. He came with referrals, but he didn't have his license yet. But he's also not getting paid for it. He's, we're not paying him to do this show. He's basically a volunteer. He's just, he's buying commercial fireworks. That's what we've had the last couple, not commercial, commercially available, residential level. The same stuff that we can get. That's what they use at the show. And so because of that, you don't need a license because they're just, what's available to everybody.
Plastic or something like that.
The difference is, he's got a lot of them. But again, that doesn't mean that you have to have a license.
You just have to store them a certain way.
And so I would say at this point, you would consider him to be an enthusiast. He has all of the wireless firing mechanisms. He's got the control boards and all that stuff. This is what he does for fun, and he's really good at it. And so, and he's got a proven track record, so not really concerned about that. We're also gonna, the same safety protocols we used in the past, we'll be using those again, so enhance them. I really wanna get the city water truck out, the city truck out there with the water tank on the back and things like that, so we can have our...
We had pretty good, you know, fire dancer out there this last, this last year.
Fire department.
We just passed their levy, so they, they show and hang out.
So I've talked to the fire department. Every year we've done this, and that, as you know, that's a busy night for them. And so they can't just be parked someplace. They have to, especially if there's gonna be surrounded by vehicles. So they're staged in their truck right here. They're ready to go. But they don't wanna be staged up there and get trapped in a bunch of cars in case there's a fire down the road or someplace else. They're less worried about us and more worried about everybody else. But they're ready to go, I almost noticed.
I got a long hose. I live pretty close. It'd be cool if they left us like a hydrant bag in the line, you know?
Well, in previous years...
It'd be cool. I know how to book a cab often.
Well, there's actually a fire hydrant right there behind the Blue bus garage.
You know, then maybe taxi.
But in previous years, we've had water extinguishers staged around the field, too. I don't know if you folks were able to see that, but there was a dozen extinguishers out in the field, so put fires out out there and so. I'd like to go a step further, but I have the city truck out there with the water tank on the back. And so after the show, we can go douse everything and, but...
Make sure it's all out.
Better insurance. We'll do that. That's the end of our city business. Any other official comments? Right, our news adjourned at 6:55 PM.